Alright, good afternoon. I see everyone is here. Council Davis is unable to attend today. So I'll begin by, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples, and in particular, acknowledge our relationships with the Katsi, Kwantlin, Matzwi, and Semiamo First Nations. And with that, I'll bring the regular meeting council to order. And the first item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Council Arneson moves it, Council Coontz seconds it. All those in favor? Opposed, and that carries. Thank you. And a motion to adopt the minutes. A regular council meeting February the 8th.
So move Ferguson.
Council Ferguson moves it, and seconder, Council Whitmarsh. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and that carries. Thank you. We move on to delegations, and I understand from the clip that the delegate is not here yet. So we will move on if the delegate does attend, then we will go back to that portion of the agenda. So then we want to reports to council, and E1 is the Murrayville Heritage Pump House. Well, options. And there's a recommendation there. I'll just turn it over to Mr. Backen if he wishes to just introduce this report.
Thank you, your worship. I think Mr. Seifi was going to address this one.
Thank you, your worship. I don't know if there are any questions. I do have a couple of slides. No more than that, your worship, just to share with council if you so wish. Just essentially looking at the location of the pump house, which I'm sure needs no introduction for council, and the corner of the five corners, so to speak, Old Gale and 216. It's has been a, I guess, a subject of some discussion over the past few months or close to a year. In terms of the historic uses of the site, your worship, it used to provide water in the early, I guess, early 19th century would have been, yeah, 1890s and 1900s. Provided water to predominantly to institutional facilities, one being the the former location of the Belmont School, as well as the municipal hall site. The former municipal hall site. Over the years, your worship, there was a need identified for a building to be reconstructed, which was then subject to reconstructive, to provide some protection for the pump that was installed sometime later. And it has never been tested because it doesn't form part of the municipal water network. But recently, in 2020, it was brought to staff's attention that there needs to be some, I guess, evaluation analysis undertaken to make sure that the the water that is being accessed for domestic uses, for consumption, human consumption, is adequate. So after it was tested, it was found to have contained or to contain two things, two parameters. One aesthetic, which is manganese, and the other one is arsenic, which is a health concern. So at that point, when staff was, I guess, made note of that, or it was brought to staff's attention as part of the analysis, then the water was shut off with no public access being provided. There was a appropriate, I guess, signage then was provided to make sure that the public is aware of the fact that the facility is or the water that may be accessed is not appropriate for public consumption. And then the subsequent analysis, your worship, was conducted that then resulted in evaluation of costs and potential options. Staff is recommending, I believe it's option two, which is not a status quo, which is not to have any water feature. I guess, just to take a quick step back. This was also the subject of some analysis by the Heritage Advisory Committee, which reviewed the building itself, the pump house, as well as identifying the water feature as an important heritage aspect of of the value of the building. So with that in mind, staff is recommending connecting the providing the municipal water system to provide, I guess, the water feature, connecting the pump house to the municipal water network, through which we can then preserve some of the maintenance, some of the heritage aspects of the building at a cost of $25,000, which can be absorbed within the existing budget, operating budgets. Having said that, there is a couple of other options that have been presented to council. Obviously, status quo is one option. But again, because the heritage value of the water feature is not being recommended, the other options are more expensive because they require significant updates to the well, to make sure that they meet current standards. And also with the unknown, I guess, factor, your worship, of whether a subsequent treatment beyond arsenic may be needed or not because of the fact that what was analyzed was just based on the arsenic or what has been proposed in terms of treatment is only to deal with arsenic and not other parameters that maybe present and maybe encountered in future days. So I don't know if there are any questions, your worship, but that's the essence of of what I wanted to share.
Thank you. I do have three hands up, so we'll start with Council Long.
Well, thanks, your worship, and thanks for that explanation from Mr. Seifi. As he mentioned, the Heritage Advisory Committee did discuss this to some extent. And I don't know if they're going to be terribly supportive of the recommendation from staff, but I would like to see council be furthest back to the Heritage Advisory Committee for some further discussion and at least let them come up with some suggestions perhaps, or concur or not concur with the recommendation from staff. So when that's appropriate, your worship, I'd really like to do that. Refer it back to the advisory committee. There's no hurry, so I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you. I'll come back to you then. Council Richter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But the Heritage Advisory Committee has already seen this, and it says right here in the report on page one that they expressed a preference to maintain the water component. Were they not aware of these four options that have been presented here to us today?
Your worship, if you don't mind, I can state that the advisory committee has not seen this report.
I didn't ask that question, Councilor Long. I asked if when the advisory committee, the Heritage, expressed a preference, were they given the four options to present around or to
The four options that are in the report that the committee has not seen were not presented that I can understand, that I recall to the committee.
Then why would there be a statement in the report saying that the committee expressed a preference for a water feature?
Another reason to refer it back to the committee, your worship. The committee expressed its desire to maintain the water feature that's at the pump house, but not necessarily in the way that is being suggested by staff to run treated water there and have that go into the ditches and so forth. So anyway, your worship, it would be great to ask these questions of the advisory committee.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I did have another question, and my question was if we do switch this over to the Murrayville Municipal Water, which I assume we're getting away from Metro and going back to treating water, what happens if the dirty water starts pouring out of that tap? I mean, technically, it's drinkable, but it looks horrible. And by choosing option two, that in my mind is a very real possibility, and I don't think that the public would find that acceptable at all.
I'm not sure what you mean by dirty water. I don't think, I think we'd have potable water going through any
No, no, the Murrayville water in that area has traditionally had an issue with the sedimentation. And the, and it turns brown. I mean, there's all kinds of pictures all over the internet of what it looks like when you fill up your sink. I'm just wondering that in the past, there has been clear water running out of that tap. If we go with option B or two, or whatever it is here, can staff guarantee that the water that will be running through that tap will be clear at all times? So that's the real question I'm asking. Thank you.
Mr. Seifi.
Thank you, your worship. As councils are aware, there are a couple of options that council has directed staff to take a look at based on the information that staff provided, your worship. One is to treat the water, to remove the aesthetic concerns with respect to the presence of manganese and iron that resulted in the discoloration of the water, or to discontinue and permanently abandon the municipal wells in the area and purchase additional water from Metro Vancouver. As I guess a refresher for all of us, the process is currently awaiting a presentation from Metro Vancouver as directed by council, which is targeted in the few weeks ahead, as we understand it, in March, as I understand it, they're aiming to provide that to council. So regardless of which option is ultimately selected by council, and the permanent abandoning of the municipal wells, or the treatment, the intent is for the water to no longer have any aesthetic issues.
Okay, so we're going to be assured then that whether this is on the municipal system or whether it stays on the well, the water that's coming out will be clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship, and through your worship to Mr. Seifi. I do thank staff for this report and discussion about the different options. I'm tending to lean towards Councilor Long's potential motion going forward, that I think this should be reviewed by the Heritage Advisory Committee at this point. I mean, some of the things that are within the actual document, I don't think are necessarily reflective of the actual use of the water by individuals in the community that prior to it being shut off and rerouted into our other water system and just basically drained away, irrespective of what we think about it being substandard, there are a lot of people who use that water. And I guess my challenge is to ask, why would those people want to use the water that is effectively metro water? Because currently, we have metro water running through there, and I don't know how long that will last. So I think it's in a heritage conservation area. I think there is a rather holistic way to look at it. There's also a reference to funds that could come from a heritage grant. So I, rather than just rushing to make a decision about it, I think we should send it back to the Heritage Advisory Committee. That's why we have advisory committees, and they can give us some further information specifically, I think, about what it is that they would like to see there. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ferguson, a question for, trying to get discussions for staff. We don't have a motion on the board yet.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to, if it does go back to the Heritage Advisory Committee, the old timers have said over the years that drinking water from that Murrayville pump station increases your cognitive intellectual ability. And that's why the people, the kids that went to the Murrayville School were smarter than everybody else in the region. You'll have to look that up, Councilor Long.
You must have been one of them. Okay, Council Long, you wish to put this motion forward or
Yes, please. Let me refer back for comment from the
Okay, moved by Council Long, seconded by Council Coontz. Discussion on the referral. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we get on to the draft 2021-2025 financial plan, and we've had many meetings on this, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the 2021 Universal Services Property Tax Revenue Increase of 3.99%. And council approved the 2021 Water Utility User Pay Levy Increase of 4.35%. And council approved the 2021 Sanitary Sewer Utility User Pay Levy of 1.48%. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Council Whitmarsh and a seconder?
I'll second.
Council Coontz and Council Richter.
I don't support a 3.99% tax increase, but I've been quite clear on that all the way through, so I won't be supporting this motion. But I did have a question because I saw an article from, I believe it was the Langley Times today, saying that if we approve this 3.99 this year, then next year we'll be coming back with a 7.91 for 2022?
So that's in the five-year plan. I'll ask Mr. Backen to explain that.
Accurate based on the projections, your worship, I should qualify that. What that means is at the present time, given anticipated revenues and expenses, that would be our balancing number. Of course, we, as we did this year, we go through a process, and that number usually is reduced significantly. So what this does do is it sets the rate as stipulated, 3.99 for this year, and it gives us a starting point for next year, but council is not committed to that next year. It simply shows the next year of the five-year financial plan, which would need further refinement.
Okay, but I was under the impression that we'd made a decision to change how we're doing budgeting going forward to 2022, that we're not going to play this seesaw negotiation game back and forth? Where you start high, you open high, and then you hope you settle somewhere in the middle, like, because that's just not working for the taxpayers.
We still have to have a five-year financial plan, so this is the staff's best estimate in how we arrive at the number. Whether this higher or not, this may be low, we don't know what next year will bring, what this year will bring, but
Okay, well, I
We do have to have a financial plan for five years, so that's staff's best
Like to make the comment that 2022 is an election year, and I don't think 7.91 is even in the realm of possibility, so things maybe need to start being looked at now. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I do appreciate that this is just a projection. And thank you, worship, for pointing that out, and also the fact that we don't really know. It could be this, it could be that, and we're required to create a five-year plan. But I just wanted to also, I guess, echo this idea that if this is out in the public realm, I find it a little bit challenging that in 2022, unfortunately, I feel like there is a public sentiment from time to time that we're sort of fiddling with the budget in order to look like we have a budget that's different or more palatable, I'll say, to the community in an election year. So I certainly wouldn't want to leave that impression, and I wonder through your worship to Mr. Backen whether or not what's currently going forward in terms of our projection, is there some potential to smooth out those numbers? So if they're all projections, why would it be wrong just to, you know, divide them up and make them more relatable to each other rather than having a spike in one year is my question. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. The number you see is effectively an arithmetic calculation based on the same process that we've been using before. So it just kind of pops out as being that. And the reason is, it's a bit like having, if I describe it this way, it's a bit like having a 4-4-4, if you're doing it over a three-year period, that would total 12. If you actually defer your original expenses in the first year to zero, that means instead of being a 4-4-4, it'd be a 0-6-6, and I use that as the illustration. What we're seeing here is just some deferments at this time that next year have to be reassessed. And with a view to, I think, reviewing some of the service levels and some of the revenue anticipations that we're seeing. Where I think the biggest change comes in this year is we're still projecting modest revenue from the recreation facilities going forward. If they were to recover, for example, that would allow us then to do much better in terms of our prediction. But the challenge we have with the auditors is there has to be a rational change for our expectations. And at this point, we're in a position where we're consistent with our modeling. And that therefore makes the, I guess, the five-year financial plan something that meets the criteria for the generally accepted accounting principles going forward. So it's safe to say that, yes, it is a bit of a spike at this point, but as we've seen in the previous years, and we've had these spikes, and this has occurred before, that does not typically represent the numbers that we arrive at and can always be subject to further issues such as pandemics or capital programs, increases or reductions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Woodruff.
Yeah, thanks. I would like to just give you a heads up, Mr. Mayor, on the email I sent around 12:30. I'd like to move that amendment at one point when council's finished with their first questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also believe that it's important that we don't have high tax increases of seven or higher percentage. I think it's always important that we do everything we can to keep the, our taxes down. It's not lower than most of our surrounding community. I think we've been able to do that over the years. I think, I wanted to ask a question to staff. The drivers that go through, that we process at budget time, they're usually, and you might want to comment as well, whether they are growth, grants, and other revenues from other departments. You've mentioned recreation revenues, but I also wanted to ask you about the DCC that are going up this year. What impact that will have on helping us with budget and budget numbers, if I may, through the Chair to Staff?
Backen.
Your worship, thank you. The DCC numbers are included with our revised projections of what the program will look like effective March 31st. Those are not going to affect the general taxation rates, except perhaps in a minor way, and that I think our assist factor for the DCC program, that being the the amount that we allocate from the general program to the DCC program to assist it is something like 1%. So it's not all that significant. So it stands as a standalone component, and in future years, as revenue is collected from the new DCC program, that will allow us more flexibility in either building infrastructure directly or procuring funds through a borrowing process to make the payments. Again, that's going to be a decision of a future council, and we know there's strong thoughts on that. As to the general cost drivers that we're facing, usually it's going to be in the realm of the salaries and wages that the corporation experiences. It's reflecting 75% of our overall expenditures. So if you have a increase of 2%, say, in the wages across the board, that automatically translates into about 1.5% in terms of the revenue needed to meet that because it represents 75% of the overall revenues needed. Where we seek to recover revenues and are things such as user fees or government grants or other elements that may be out there. And that's always a changing, changing playing field. One of the reasons why there is that theoretical spike occurring downstream is trying to make the assumptions as to what revenue will recover, or how that will recover from from the recreation area for user fees, but it also applies to other areas where we're seeing relatively robust growth in such things as building permit fees and development applications, where in fact, those are trending well ahead of what was projected. And we built those numbers into this going, going forward. The other component, of course, is going to be the government grant aspect. We just don't have a good sense what the government grant programs will look like next year, so we have to assume there'll be zero at this point, but as has been referenced, we were fortunate enough this year to receive a certificate grant, and we have no information upon which to base any assumptions for next year.
Well, my last point is that, you know, now that we have COVID, we're hopefully getting at it, although no one can predict that, so it's very important to follow the public health procedures and their recommendations for as long as we are asked to do so. It always is a challenge at budget times with all these cost drivers. Police, fire, and the staff contracts, those always are a challenge, and I think that we do everything we can to keep our tax increases low. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long. Yeah, thanks, your worship. I certainly was flabbergasted when I saw the five-year as well, that 7.151 and the 2.9, but I appreciate the explanation that's been given. You know, the numbers are what they are, and I guess they have to be moved somewhere. But I guess the question I have, you know, some are saying, well, we can't have that 3.99, but that's way too high. If that number comes down, how does that affect '22, '23, '24, and '25? Can we have an idea of what kind of figures would be in those columns, should we reduce it from 3.99 to, say, say even 1% or 1%, you know, 1% less or something like that, but it must have a factor there. Could staff give some direction on that? Mr. Backen.
Thank you, your worship. No, that's correct. If the rate was reduced this year, in fact, it can have a decrease in, a reduction, or it could also have an increase. And what I mean by that is if there was a reduction this year, say, and that reduced something permanently, we'll just pick RCMP officers as an illustration, then they would not flow through the system, and that would reduce in subsequent years. If however, we simply said, oh, we're going to postpone, again, defer the impact of those officers, that doesn't really help us because then we're simply deferring the expense. And I use my example of if you have 4% over three years, a total of 12%, if you have it over two years, it means it'd be a 0-6-6. So you're just deferring your expenses to a later date. So yes, it can have a reducing influence, provided there's a associated reduction in the services. And again, the first place one looks at for service reductions is going to be the area where you're adding services, rather than trying to impact the status quo, you would be tending to look not to increase in certain areas, and that would be your first choice. So yes, it can have a reducing impact, but it can also have an increasing impact unless there's an adjustment in your overall expenses as seen by a service reduction.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm maybe speaking to the same point. I know that that certainly we've chosen in this year's budget to defer some items. There are some things that we deferred from last year's budget. So at some point, I recognize that there is a, there is a cost to doing business, and we have to be prepared for that. However, I, you know, the way that it's showing up at the 7.51 in one year, I think it's clear to at least everyone here in this council that none of us are interested in 7.51 next year. And yet, we, you know, we recognize that you still have to pay your costs, and you have to keep moving the township forward. So I'm wondering if there is just a better way for us to present this? And I sort of appreciate the suggestion made by Council Armisen. I'm wondering if the subsequent four years there could be more smoothed out. I mean, it works out to an average of 3.92 for each year. And if there's a way to reflect that we would be able to manage those deferrals over a period of a few years, just something that's a bit more realistic. I appreciate that when we get to the budget process, and we've all talked about having a different process, that we'd like to, you know, that we'll make adjustments and do the best we can to bring taxes as low as we possibly can. But to send out a message to the community when most members of the community aren't aware of all the nuances of how the budgeting process is done, and they simply look at that number and go, wow, next year 7.51, and we get printed in the newspaper, and then we'll have to do damage control on something that's actually never going to happen. So I'm wondering if there's a way to present it differently, smooth it out, demonstrate that there is an adjustment, maybe 3.92 we show for the subsequent four years, and that may not be palatable to anyone on council either, but at least it's within the ballpark of the ranges that we've been dealing with over the last few years. Thank you.
Mr. Backen.
Thank you, your worship. I think there's really two parts to the question. How can those subsequent years be smoothed out? One part I can address, the second part I'll leave for Sandra and Sam. Now, the one part, of course, would be to smooth out by, rather than decreasing year one, it would be increasing, which of course is something we're not going to be doing. But that would then have the impact of smoothing it out by maintaining service levels. The other one, of course, is to reduce the service requirements in the first year that then has a cascading effect over subsequent years. Now, it's an interesting point, then. Could the second year, if you will, of the five-year plan be averaged over the subsequent years? So I believe it going by, from memory, was something like 7.5, then back down to a more traditional number of 2.5 or 3 in that range. So Sandra and Sam, what would be involved in terms of, from a financial perspective, in terms of doing that modification? Council can certainly move the motion to do so, and that's really the easy part. What does it do in the back end of it then to achieve that? Maybe you can describe a little bit in terms of how you would you would look at the overall impact. And I believe the answer would come into likely reducing some expenses in those years, just generally reducing the expenses. But how detailed would you have to be in terms of where that expense reduction was occurring? So one option would be simply reducing the capital program in those years, but are there any other options? I think you're muted.
Ms. Ruff? Yeah, maybe something wrong with your audio, because even when you're showing unmuted, we couldn't hear you, so.
Yeah, now you're showing muted.
There might be a setting on your mic to change microphones. The bottom left.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you. Thank you.
So my comment was that our largest increase So my comment was that our largest increase for next year is caused by the recreation. And we brought only fifty percent of that revenue back in due to the uncertainty around COVID and the returns of those revenues next year. We also have to remember that we brought on for RCMP and we've annualized those in the following year. But there, we could look at some other expenses. The, we brought the capital infrastructure reserve back in. So we can look at some of those details.
So Sandra, I think you hit upon something. For assumption and modeling purposes, if in twenty twenty-two, we took the revenue to a higher number and maybe looked at a combination of that with lowering, say, some of the capital program. Again, that's something we have to revisit. It's not something council's committing to. Do you think that would bring the number down significantly in terms of, of a balancing number?
Yes, we could probably move it down.
Would you suggest then, perhaps while we're, we're in this discussion, you could do a quick analysis in terms of what it would take to, to level that down to say the same number just across the board for the five-year plan, just to see what that would do and, and see if that's achievable. And then we can continue this discussion and provide that before we make any, any motions.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll, we'll come back to you. Counselor Kunst. Counselor Whitmarsh, that was, you're complete with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think for me, it's about the message that we're sending to the public. I appreciate that. We're not doing the twenty twenty-two budget today, but it's the message that we're sending. And I just wonder, I just don't want to send a message out to the public that we know isn't going to be true and we're going to craze all kinds of alarms about something that's never going to happen anyway. So that's why I'm trying to make some kind of adjustment here.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kunst?
So my question isn't regarding this particular, is, can I ask it now or is, are we still on this topic?
On, no, on the button with the motion head.
Okay, so I was speaking with someone from the chamber and they were, wanted some assurance that we were messing around with the mill rate. Could someone speak to that through your worship to Mr. Backen?
Yeah, that, that's an interesting one. Mill rates always come up with people, but the, I think our staff can give a pretty good explanation on how that works. Mr. Backen?
Thank you, your worship. The, I think the question is really, are we addressing the issue of differential mill rates between the various classifications, say, residential, commercial and industrial? And we have not changed our traditional formula. I qualify it that way only because each year when you do a, a calculation, your mill rates are slightly adjusted. They, they have to be to end up with the number that you need to, to balance to. So while there is some slight adjustments to mill rates every time there's a budget, we're not going down any differential mill rates between the categories. So we're consistent with the direction councils previously provided in saying that we're at the same proportion of the mill rates among all the various classifications. So effectively, no change to the mill rate from, from the perspective of shifting the burden from one class to another.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my support to Counselor Whitmarsh's comments with regards to smoothing the impact of the seven point five one over five years instead of hitting us with the whole thing in one year, which is an election year. I think he's quite correct. And this, in my mind, plays into the need for us to start looking at doing things differently in our budgeting process. Because this, as I said earlier, this seesaw back and forth is, is not working. It's not working for the taxpayers and we have to start making things work better for them. It's not about us making sure that the municipal budget is as high as we can get it. It's about making sure that what we're doing is affordable for everybody. I also had a question of clarification on two things. On the first thing, Mr. Backen made a comment that the auditors are now putting opinions together on our budgets. Did I hear that correctly? Because what are they doing involved in our budgets?
Thank you, your worship. It's a, it's a good clarification. As part of our financial plan, we must actually have a, a historical look at our financial records, but also include in that our five-year financial plan. In terms of that, what they wish to see is simply that they balance. For example, we could not simply have a, a stipulation that there was a, well, let's say a three point nine nine percent rate going forward. And arithmetically, it didn't actually work. We have to actually go beyond that and underlight, make sure we reduce or increase our revenue so that they actually balance. They're not actually auditing the future budgets. They're auditing our arithmetic and our forward-looking mechanisms to make sure that there's simply a balance in terms of those numbers.
Now, is this something new that they're doing? Because I've never heard of this before.
No, they've always been required to have a look at our formulas to make sure that they are logical because the, the need stems from the municipal act itself or the local government act and community charter, which requires a five-year financial plan going forward. So it's not something that's new. It's a simply a matter of the, the question was, what could we simply have a, a million dollar or two million dollar discrepancy in our numbers that they would pick up on and comment. But as long as there's a balance, they don't look beyond that for the substance for future years.
Okay, so did, did any of this come to council? Because I don't recall seeing or reading anything about numbers having to add up in the five-year financial plan. It's a plan.
Traditionally, yes, it's been forth to council in terms of the financial statements and the commentary on it. The, the question I think is that any financial plan, while again, not the substance, the process must be sound to show that there's going to be a, a reconciliation of the numbers. And they, they're, the reason why it would pop, pop up before council would be if the numbers did not balance, they'd be then obliged to say, well, in the second year, there is this discrepancy. Because we've never had such a discrepancy, it hasn't been addressed in that context.
Okay, so could the actual comment that the auditors made be forwarded to council, please? I'd like to read it and understand.
So I think that, that underscores the clarification, your, your worship. The auditors haven't made a comment because the numbers have balanced. As part of the process, they look to make sure there's a balance. So we can't forward a comment they haven't made. It's to preclude them from making such a comment. So I think that's probably where the confusion's coming in.
So why would we bring the auditors into this at this point? I'm, I'm, I'm just really confused here with this process.
The auditors are, are there to, as, as oversight on municipal funding and that all municipalities have to abide by the legislation.
Yeah, and I understand that, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly appreciate that. But what I don't appreciate is the auditors making an opinion on our budget, which is essentially what's being said here. And I, I, I just want to know where that's coming from.
I believe it's Mr. Backen said they're making an opinion that the budget process, as far as the numbers are done correctly, they're not making an opinion on whether on the rate, whether it's high or low. They, they don't make an opinion on that. They just, as auditors, ensure that our processes are in place and that we've adhered to our own processes. And that we follow the legislation. And that's.
Okay, but, but it actually sounds like the auditors haven't said anything. Staff are doing this because they're pre-thinking what the auditors are going to say. Is that true?
So you all have to do in business.
So, so your worship, I'll try.
That's the way I do business.
So your worship.
Mr. Backen?
No, no, I'll try, your worship. It is, it is unfortunately confusing. I suppose the best way is a bit of an analogy. If it came to the year end and the auditors found there was two million dollars missing, I think everyone would expect that they would have to point that out and, and we'd have to take the appropriate steps. That's probably the best analogy to it. As we go forward then, and we, and we look at our formulas and processes going forward, what they're saying is by, by not making a comment that there's two million dollars missing, whether it's this year or in future years, they're simply saying that the model actually works in terms of that the arithmetic is actually correct and is efficient. They don't look at the substance of future years, because of course, there's nothing to audit. It hasn't occurred yet. But they do look at the system to make sure that it's in balance. That's all we're trying to achieve. If, if they, if it wasn't in balance, just like if there was something missing in our expenditures, if there's something missing going forward, they would comment on that in their review letters saying that there's a arithmetic calculation and it should be corrected. The reference to why reference the auditors was only because that if we were going down the path of our smoothing of not making the underlying changes to either the revenues or the expenses so that the model was sound, then it would be not in balance. That's what would trigger their, their comments on this to say, your model doesn't make any sense. Again, whatever the model is, it can be, whether it's a, a zero taxation to a higher taxation level or wherever that may be. It simply has to be in a balance and council can decide substantively. So the, the purpose was to make sure that if we're actually doing a smoothing, that we're actually making sure the underlying numbers are corrected to reflect that smoothing, which is what Sandra and Sam were looking at right now as we're having this discussion, to see what we can do to, to move some of the, the envelopes around going forward. Primarily, I think by raising the revenue from recreation culture and parks and potentially reducing some expenses later on. So the model is sound.
So is it possible for council to request a meeting with the auditors about this? Because I'd like to hear it from them.
They, they come every year.
Yeah, I know, but they come about what's already happened. They don't come about what's going to happen. And I'm not getting the connect here.
Okay, Mr. Backen.
So, you know, we can actually ask them to, to make sure that they point out that the five-year financial plan is in balance, if you will, that the, that the envelopes are there the same. That's certainly something that's fairly easy to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Ferguson for a second time. But Counselor Woodruff, are you still waiting for the motion or do you wish to speak to?
Oh, still patiently waiting for that.
I'll go to Counselor Ferguson and I'll come back to you then. Okay, Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with most what council said, both Counselor Whitmarsh and Counselor Richter and others have talked about, you know, what's the high for next year, seven or something percent, you know. But I did want to point out that a lot of things have been said today about a lot of things. And that's important to know because I was on a task force a number of years ago with Mayor Green. And it was the budget task force and the, a financial plan task work where Mayor Green began the whole meeting with an eight and a half by eleven blank piece of paper with a number of sheets. And we started from scratch. We had accountants in the room. We had our staff. We had advisors from other jurisdictions, both accountants and others. And we looked at police, fire, sewer, water, drainage, stiking, our development department, roads, pools, rigs and parks. We looked at everything. And it doesn't matter what you do within a community, how you do it, those drivers still exist and they're expensive. And no matter how many times you look at those numbers, those numbers don't change other than the fact they keep getting more and more expensive. Nothing's cheaper. In fact, even to build, build and buying land is more and more expensive. Nothing's getting any cheaper and it's tougher and tougher for communities to do it. I also, they also compared it to other communities like Vancouver. They have so many different levies. They have a levy for your water bill, a levy for your sewer bill, a levy for your recycling and garbage collection. And then two times a year, you get your tax notices. So a lot of different communities do things differently.
Point of clarification, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
What's your point of order?
Well, the city of Vancouver operates under an entirely different charter than the rest of us do.
Yeah, that's fair. Thank you.
Well, that part's true. That part is true. But they also compared to Richmond and the other, Richmond had as many as three or four levies as well. So there's a number of different, I'm just using that as an example. No matter how you look at it, it's always going to be a challenge at budget time. And I just wanted to point that out. And at the end of the day, when Mayor Green finished his report and put it to council, there weren't that many changes. We proceeded accordingly as we normally would under budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick question here. On the universal services, there's an item that's identified there, general government support services. And I, I just can't remember what that is. I don't know. Is that related to the tree protection as well or is that something different?
Your, your worship, I'll, I'll try that generally. I think what that's called, what that's called is the overhead charge. What we, the utilities don't have all the administrative and overhead staff that the organization does. So what we do is we actually bill out to the utilities a certain portion, five, seven, 10% of some of the, their overall expenses to account for the services provided by other parts of the organization such as finance, human resources, those elements. I think without looking it up, that may be what we're referring to.
Okay, that's the ninety-four thousand or ninety-five thousand dollars that is in Universal.
That sounds about right going by, by memory. That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Point of information, your worship. Do we have a motion now?
There is a motion on the floor. So I've got.
One that's in the package.
The motion is, as you see, on E two. Yeah. So Counselor Woodruff, I think at this point, would like to make an amendment. Counselor Woodruff?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So before I move it specifically, maybe I did discuss this with Mr. Backen a bit. Maybe, Mr. Backen, you can explain the intent of this and how it would work in relation to the current bylaw?
First of all, we'll get the motion on the floor.
Okay, I'll move the motion.
Is there a second or?
I second.
Counselor Richter seconds. Thank you. So Counselor Woodruff, obviously speak first. You've asked a question, Mr. Backen. Mr. Backen, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I think the motion's been circulated and this is, I think, dealing with the concern as to water. As, as Mr. Seffy referenced, the, the challenge with water at the moment is there's two schools of thought in terms of the water utility going forward. One school of thought is to either entirely or migrate towards exclusively Metro Vancouver water. The other is to maintain a blended system, but perhaps increase the amount of water coming from our wells in that blended system after treatment, as Mr. Seffy suggested, so that we can utilize our groundwater more so and that would have the impact of keeping, potentially keeping some of the overall rates down. So the motion that's been put forth is, is to confirm, I think, effectively that the, the budget allows for both options. That means that we built into the financial plan enough of an envelope for revenues and expenditures such that both options are still viable, but that no decision will be made as to which way to go until council's been able to hear from the, the presentation from Metro Vancouver and been able to deliberate further on this matter such that we, we can make the decision at a later date, but still have the budget going forward, preserving both options, but making sure no decision is made until after the Metro Vancouver presentation and council has had an opportunity to deliberate further.
Yeah, so thanks for that. And so I'll speak to it a little bit. So I think that that explanation is hopefully helpful. Hopefully getting it in advance via email was helpful. The intent here is to find a way to preserve the budget bylaws drafted by staff would provide some clarity around the delay in getting the presentation from Metro Vancouver and then hopefully having a little bit more discussion about the, what the issue after receiving that information. And not much point in having a resolution to receive that information and then make the decision prior to getting that information. So that's the intent here of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I had a question with regards to the four point three five percent tax increase in the water utility. And what portion of that four point three five percent is being driven by building three treatment plants in the township of Langley?
I believe it's equal, whether we build it or purchase the waters, equal cost.
Yeah, but what?
Five million, one point five million. So, Mr. Backen, maybe.
I'll leave Mr. Seffy's help on this, your worship. Yeah, the, the primary increase in cost, as I recall, was through Metro Vancouver's water usage rates. Now, as we looked at putting in the treatment facilities, they had a similar impact, but their duration was much less. So for Metro Vancouver, the, the increase goes, well, effectively out for the length of the plan, for the, for the water plants, they're effectively repaid in, in three years. But Mr. Seffy, are you able to elaborate at all as to the, the impact of the, of either of those at this point? I, I think they're, they're neutral between the options, but I'm not certain on that.
Yes, I guess in terms of the technical side of things, I can provide some comments, but perhaps Ms. Ruff or, or, or Mr. Nam can provide additional comments in terms of how it's been structured in the budget. The cost of treatment, your worship, is approximately, as I recall, six million dollars. Now, that could either be, I guess funded in, in, in lump sum one time or spread over a number of years. If it was to be addressed in, in lump sum fashion in one year, then the payback, if you will, would be equivalent to four years of purchase of, of additional water from, from Metro Vancouver at an estimated cost of one point five million dollars, additional cost to whatever you pay prior to the abandonment of the roads in, in the Brookswood Marvell area. So assuming that there's no increase in cost to the bought purchase by, by municipal governments from Metro Vancouver, the cost that was estimated was one point five million dollars. So four years would pay for the six, six million dollar expenditure for the treatment option if it was to be done in one go.
Okay, but the question that I'm asking maybe is more of a finance question in the sense that I want to know what percent of the four point three five tax increase that we're being asked to approve today is being driven by this six million dollar expenditure that we want to recoup over four years? So is it half? Is it a quarter? Is it a third? Is it 10%?
So we'll have to defer to, to Ms. Ruff on the numbers. But as I understand it, then I'm going again by memory. The six million dollar for the treatment facilities was being funded over three years, maybe a bit longer. And the, the way we've structured it is that the amount we anticipate the metro fees to go up for. And the the way we've structured it is that the amount we anticipate the metro fees to go up for our water purchases, if we didn't go down that path, would also be two million dollars. So the question really is, if that's correct, Sandra, if the options are effectively leading us to the same rate, how much is the this rate being driven by the increase in Metro Vancouver rates? Or how much of it is being driven by the the same equivalent number being the the amount to required to to fund the treatment facilities?
The largest driver in the in the rates is the Jericho Water Reserve amount to fund that project for the future years. There's a small increase in the, I think it's about 3.5% increase in the metro water rates, but there's no impact from the reflected in that 4.35 of the in of the metro water choice versus the the wells.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so of the 4.35% increase, it's 3.5% of that is metro? Is that what what we're being told here? So there's over and above the 3.5, there'd then be the balance to take it up to 4.35?
So Sandra, I think it's a, the question is, as I understand it, is the Jericho Reservoir, the completion of that, which serves many parts of the township and some parts of other communities, but we know that ours is a predominant share, of the total number, the 4.35 represents. If you can convert the 4.35 to a number and then tell us how much of that number is Jericho. So for example, if it was four million dollars for the Jericho plant, and sorry, if the if the rates were driving four million dollars in additional revenue and we knew three million dollars was coming from the Jericho expenses, that would be 75% of the rate increase. Can you comment at all in terms of what the total dollar raised is and what portion of that is being dedicated to Jericho?
So three plus percent is caused by Jericho. There's a 0.5% increase due to water purchase price increase.
And that water purchase is all of the water that we purchased in township of Langley. So 0.5% covers the increase from Metro Vancouver water. Is that correct?
And where does the balance come from that takes it up to 4.35 then?
There must be other projects that we, that the water users pay for. You know, the East Langley Water Supply was embedded in that for many years. So, Mr. Backen, would there be other projects that would be embedded in that that we're also anticipating?
And that's that's effectively correct, your worship, as I've heard Sandra suggest of the 4.35, three is Jericho and additional water was, we'll call it 0.5. The question then is, where's the additional 0.85 coming from? And that takes us back to some of our original meetings, I think, in December, where there was a list of of both operational expenses and projects that were actually processed through that. Now, Sandra, you, Sandra and Sam, you may or may not have that that handy, but can you make any references to anything that's notable that may be a significant portion of that 0.85 that we're seeing?
Salaries and general maintenance items are probably the majority of that.
So I guess it'd be safe to say then, in the in the event that there was no Jericho and in the event there was no differential rates coming from Metro Vancouver, the utility would be looking at only a 0.85% increase, which is a, which is fairly positive, depending upon where the other costs and charges are. But of course, we are obliged to to actually pay our contribution towards Jericho and obliged to pay for the additional rates coming from Metro Vancouver water.
So my final question on this then is the three plus percent that's coming from Jericho. Is that a one-year deal? Like, is it done this year? Or is this something that's going to carry forward into future years as well?
There's one more year after this year, two more years after this year, sorry.
Of again, another 3%, so we're looking at three, 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 so 9% over three years?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Long.
Yeah, I think after all of that, the point was that the, because you are talking about the amendment. The amendment is.
Amendment, yeah, that's to do with water.
4.35 at all.
Please, maybe just speak up a little bit. You're very, it's very quiet.
Oh, is it all right? Okay, how's this? A little better?
It's a little better, yeah.
Okay, closer. The amendment doesn't affect the 4.35% at all. That figure is going to remain what it is regardless of this amendment. And I understand that we've decided as a council that we are going to hear this presentation from Metro Vancouver and that the decision to go ahead or not go ahead with the water treatment plants from Murrayville will be dependent on a on a motion that's been referred or deferred till after that presentation. So I don't understand the need for this motion. And if the motion was to try and change the number that Counsel Richter, I think, was alluding to, and it doesn't, then really what the motion is doing is just repeating more or less what we've decided to do anyway. Isn't that, is that where staff might be suggesting we're at with this amendment? Or do they feel this amendment's required?
Mr. Backen?
Well, thank you, your worship. No, I think the the direction we've chosen is that there would be implementation would be delayed until such time as there was a Metro Vancouver presentation and further council deliberation. I think what this makes it sure is that the, any expenditure of funds could not occur till that occurs as well. So I think it's effectively supplementary and it works fine from a staff perspective because it just, I guess, closes a theoretical gap that would exist in terms of the the decision being made or prior to the decision, doing any any further work on that. So I I think it's complementary and and doesn't cause us any concern.
Well, a motion that's complementary to staff, who could oppose that? Is my sound a little bit better now, your worship?
It's better now, yeah, thanks. All right, turned up my volume. Okay, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I sort of was on the long lines that Counsel Long was suggesting, but I'm certainly supportive of this motion. I think we haven't made a decision as a council yet, so this is clearly indicating that we still have it to be discussed. Can you just be reminded of when is the metro presentation? I forgot.
Do we have a date, Mr. Backen?
Your worship, the best information that we have is that they're currently targeting one of the meetings in March. We've advised them of the council calendar. They're aiming for the first one, March the 8th, I think is the correct date. But they haven't made a commitment yet, so they're targeting March the 8th.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so on the amendment, I'm going to call the question. I see no further discussion. All those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. And Counsel Woodward, so on the main motion is amended.
Yeah, so thanks. So I left my comments on the main motion until the fate of that amendment was known. So I appreciate that going ahead. I appreciate Mr. Backen's explanation there. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the the year coming up in regards to the the 7% that's out there now. And I don't, I don't foresee anyone on this council supporting a 7% budget increase in any year. So I I think it's fine, you know, to to look at the draft plan. That's what it is. That's why it's called draft plan. It's not, we're only approving one budget at a time. So while I would prefer that we were not sending a message that we support 7%, I understand why it's in there and given the uncertainty coming up, I think we can manage it. And again, I certainly won't support a 7% tax increase. You can't imagine anyone else here will. So I'm assuming next year we'll we'll get to work and and provide another updated draft amended budget and an amended financial plan. I can't remember the last time the projected year, in the following year of a draft plan, was actually the tax increase that was passed. I'm not sure that's actually ever happened. And Mr. Backen can clarify if I'm wrong, but I don't recall it happening. And so I I certainly share my, just the concerns that that 7% is too high. For me, 4% is too high. So but without a budget, there isn't a corporation. So I appreciate a lot of the input of my fellow council members on the budget. I am going to be one of those ones where, you know, sometimes you're 51%, 49 opposed, and you're voting in favor. It's not 100 on this one. You know, I've tried to get it down a little bit lower. That failed. So I think, you know, in the end, we'll we'll go as a group here and I'll support the budget overall with some concerns around water treatment, some concerns around the DCC program that can certainly be revisited next year. But I think for the COVID situation and the pressure that the corporation is under in regards to COVID, this is one that that I support, 51 to 49. Thank you.
Thank you. Interesting. I like that analysis of your vote. Thank you. Counsel Richter, you've spoken twice, so I can't go to you for a third time under. Okay, thank you. So with that, I will call the question on the motion E2 as amended. All those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so now we don't have any bylaws for first and second reading tonight, or this afternoon, but we do have some for first, second and third reading. G1 is Highway Development Works Agreement Bylaw, 2020, number 5682. So if I could have a motion, please. Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Arneson. Discussion. See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. That was, yeah, thank you, carried. And move on to G2, Langley, 2021, 2025, Five-Year Financial Plan Bylaw and Development Cost Charge Reserve Fund Expenditure Bylaw, Bylaw 5692 and Bylaw 5691. Have a motion, please.
Go move Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves, second Counsel Long. Any discussion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter is opposed and motion carries. Move on to G3, User Pay Utility Rate Bylaws for 2021. Bylaw 5693 and 5694. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Counsel Whitmarsh moves it and second over Counsel Long. Any discussion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And we want to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H1 is Res zoning application number 100605 and development permit application number 101161, flat architecture. Bylaw 5687. Could I have a motion, please?
Your worship, go move Ferguson.
Okay, let's get on the floor. So Counsel Ferguson moves it and a second or?
Well, I'll second it, but it needs to be amended.
Counsel Long, yeah, okay. Counsel Long, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's an error in the in the preamble there. It says H1 that it's on April 20th, 2021, unless I'm reading it incorrectly. It must be approved on April 2020, not 2021, because that ain't happened yet.
Okay, on April 2021.
And so I think that's just an error in.
Okay, it might be just type, yeah, it's just a type on the heading. Is it in the body? So thanks for pointing that out.
And then the other question I had is that it talks about written submissions. So were there any? I couldn't find any written.
No, Ms. Ms. Bauer indicates that there have been none.
Okay, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. See no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And we move on to bylaws for final adoption. I1 is Highway Closure, Dedication, Removal and Disposal. Bylaw number 5435, McDonald Realty. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson moves it, second or? Counsel Long, discussion. See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Woodward, are you opposed, Counsel Woodward? I'm sorry, I hang up late. Just want to make sure.
Sorry, which one are we on, Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
Uh, that was I1.
Yeah, going a little faster for me. So I1, I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I2, Temporary Boring Bylaws and Municipal Security Issuing Resolution, Bylaw number 5689. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson moves it, second or? Counsel Long, any discussion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed. It carries. Thank you. We go to I3, and this is Non-Medical Cannabis Retail Sales Development Application Bylaw, number 5664. Could I have a motion on the bylaw, please?
So moved.
Counsel Kuntz, second. Have a second on the bylaw?
I'll second it.
Counsel Richter, Counsel Long?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. There was, now, this is only a very small document. We have only the four pages to give it final reading. But in the, when we looked at all these applications, there was offers or or suggestions made by the proponents, you know, to to donate certain funds to certain things. And I don't see that in here. I just want to make sure that this, you know, this was offered, I believe, by the proponent to to give some money to the Aldergo Business Association or something like that. I just want to make sure that that's somehow documented before we give final reading, that these offers that are made entirely voluntarily, proponents are are recognized and followed through. I remember somebody offering money many, many years ago, and I don't, I don't think it ever got to anybody. That was in Aldergo. And then, and then I'm, if that could also be applied to any other application, well, we only have the one other that we've approved. And were there any in offers of of community contributions made by them? And does staff have a way that they can make sure that they're followed through on and recorded in some way?
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffy. Mr. Backen?
Your worship, Mr. Seffy, I think has got his screen up and can comment.
Mr. Seffy?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just thought I'll share the aerial map that we have for the site just to provide context, remind all of us where this particular property is, where this, the subject of this application is. Bylaw number 5664. It's on the west side of Highway 13, north side of Highway, sorry, Fraser Highway in the Aldergo area. And as far as the question that was posed by Counsel Long is concerning, your worship, yes, staff will ensure that the, sorry, just to take a step back. Typically, when items are brought forward for council consideration of final reading, we don't repeat the the previous reports. That's why it's fairly light and it's only consists of the actual bylaw that council is is given final reading to or is being considered for final reading by council. So the previous reports have not been accompanied based on past precedents and and practice in terms of processing applications for council's consideration. That said, your worship, I guess, a couple of things. I'm just being careful how I word this because we cannot guarantee the offers because they were not made part of the requirements to proceed. However, if there has been an offer made, we will follow up on that and sub it to the applicant confirming that they are still planning to proceed with those amenities, if you will, or other other incentives that they put forward, will make sure that they're they're implemented. But they're not going to be made conditions. They have not been made conditions of of the rezoning. That's why we ask council to consider the application for final reading.
Yeah, and I guess that makes sense because these are offers that were made voluntarily. And I don't know if we can find a way to to put that into the document. But as long as we keep an eye on it, if someone makes an offer, they should be, they should follow through. Your, your muted, your worship.
Here, I'm happily talking away and no one's listening. Story of my life. All right, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Seffy. And with that, I see no further discussion. So I'm going to call the question on the bylaw. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Arneson, Counsel Woodward and Counsel Long. Counsel Ferguson opposed, this is fourth reading. So the motion fails.
Well, I'd better vote again, your worship.
I'm sorry?
Well.
Reconsider, it's, okay, I'm going to call reconsiderations to make sure we got everyone on this. So the motion, if it could be moved, again, just want to make sure. This is the fourth reading. Counsel Whitmarsh and seconded.
I'll second it.
Counsel Kuntz, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Arneson opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. There is a second part to this. It's an endorsement. The council has considered an endorsed request. It's at the bottom of page seven. That's a technical part to this. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counsel Richter, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds it. Discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson opposed. The endorsement carries. Thank you. Move on to I4, Res zoning application number 100513 and development permit application number 100974, Centerra Developments. Bylaw number 5427. Could I have a motion on the bylaw, please? Counsel Arneson moves it, second or? Have a second? Counsel Whitmarsh, see no discussion. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. So on the development permit, 100974, could I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Counsel Long, second by Counsel Ferguson. See no discussion. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to I5. This is Official Community Plan Amendment and Res zoning application number 100155 and development permit application number 100942. Oh, this is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number one, zero, zero, one, five, five, and development permit application number one, zero, zero, nine, four, two. By law, by law, number five, four, three, nine, and five, four, four, zero, could I have a motion on the bylaws, two, please, two bylaws?
Move.
Counsel Whitmarsh moves it, is there a seconder? Is there a second, Counsel Long, any discussion? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson opposed, the motion carries. And on the development permit application, number one, zero, zero, nine, four, two, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long moves it, seconder? Uh, could I have a second? Counsel Kuntz? Seconds it, uh, no discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson opposed, it carries, thank you. Move on to I six. This is rezoning application number one, zero, zero, five, two, one, and development permit application numbers, one, zero, zero, nine, nine, seven, and one, zero, one, one, five, six, and development variance permit number, one, zero, zero, one, one, six, Waterstone Anderson Limited, it's by law, five, five, three, four, and five, five, three, five. Could I have a motion on the bylaws, please?
I'll move it.
Counsel Long, and a seconder?
Second.
Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion on the bylaws, see none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson opposed, carries, and I need a motion on the two development permits and the development variance permit, that I read out earlier, could I have a motion on those, please? Counsel Long, and a seconder, Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, see none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Arneson and Counsel Ferguson opposed? No, Counsel Ferguson's in favor, it's Counsel Arneson opposed, it carries, thank you. And move on to I seven, rezoning application number one, zero, zero, five, seven, eight, and development permit application number one, zero, one, 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 Zentara West End, uh, it's by law, five, five, eight, three. Could I have a motion on the bylaw, please? Counsel Arneson moves it, is there a seconder? Counsel Ferguson? Any discussion? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? And that carries, thank you. And on the development permit application, one, zero, one, 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 uh, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Ferguson's.
And Ferguson seconds. See no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries, thank you. I eight, non-medical cannabis retail sales development application, uh, by law, number five, six, three, zero, uh, same process as last time, a motion on the bylaw, Counsel Kuntz, seconder?
Second.
Counsel Richter, any discussion, Counsel Long?
Thanks, your worship, I, I, I guess I can't recall with all the twenty-one applications we made, what offers these folks made to make our community a better place to live, so can staff please check into that and make sure that if there was a mention, that, uh, it's followed up?
Followed, yes, thank you, they've gotten hold of that, thank you. All right, I'll call the question on the bylaw, five, six, three, zero, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward and Counsel Ferguson opposed? Thank you, carries. Uh, there's an endorsement, uh, to endorse this request, uh, could I have a motion on the endorsement? Counsel Whitmarsh moves it, Counsel Richter seconds it, any discussion? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson opposed, carries, thank you. All right, there's a one piece of correspondence, could I have a motion to receive on J one? Counsel Arneson moves it, second by Counsel Ferguson. Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. And move on to minutes of committees, there's Heritage Advisory Committee, Recreation, Culture and Parks, uh, committee, uh, minutes of February the third and February the tenth, respectively. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counsel Kuntz, seconder? Uh, could I have a second? Counsel Ferguson? No discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Don't know if Counsel Woodward is present. So we'll mark Counsel Woodward absent, don't see him. Oh, there he is.
Yes, he is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, I called the question for K one, uh, just three feet of the minutes, I just want to.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of receiving the minutes, yep.
Thank you. K two, Heritage Advisory Committee recommended motion is that the, we approve, council approved the twenty twenty-one work plan, as presented, A. Has moved by, sorry, by who?
By Counsel Long, we'll move the.
Counsel Long moves it, second? Could I have a seconder on that?
Second Ferguson.
Ferguson seconds it, discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you, K three is Recreation, Culture, Parks Advisory Committee recommended motion. Counsel Richter moves their work plan, and a seconder? Counsel Woodward, thank you, discussion, see none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries, thank you. All right. A lot of work done in a very short time, um, I'll move on to the mayor's, mayor's report. And just wait for staff to catch up. In this COVID world, these mayor's reports are a little shorter than they used to be. Lack of events to go to. All right, uh, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome here to our Zoom meeting, on February the tenth, I met with our member of the Legislative Assembly, Ma- Megan Dykman, the RCMP and a representative from the Ministry of Social Development Poverty Reduction, to discuss the ongoing issues at, at, uh, the Travel Lodge in Murrayville. We're working with the ministry to find effective lasting solutions to issues in the surrounding neighborhood, and, and really to look for s- solutions to the issues of homelessness, uh, throughout the township of Langley, and I know we're, everyone's, uh, working very hard on that, so I don't want to single out one area, it certainly is something we need to deal with, uh, in the whole lower mainland. Uh, later that day, the federal government announced, uh, fourteen point nine billion, with a B, dollars, in funds for public transit projects over the next eight years, which includes permanent funding of three billion per year for Canadian communities beginning in twenty twenty-six. Uh, this is great news for transit across the country and here in Metro Vancouver. For several years, Translink has been calling for a permanent transit fund, and I know FCM has also been doing that, uh, to give, uh, long la- long-term predict- predictability that we need to plan the future of transit network. Uh, this funding is critical to support Transit's COVID recovery over the next few years, helping to reduce the financial challenges so they can rebuild ridership and keep their system running at the level our region needs to rebound from this pandemic. Uh, and, uh, at this point, there's nothing, uh, for sure, you know, still more details have to come, but we're estimating it's approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars per year for the Metro Vancouver region, which is, uh, really good news, and something we've been asking for. And in fact, the, um, some say it's beginning in twenty twenty-six, why so far away? Well, actually, FCM and Translink were asking for it to begin in twenty twenty-eight, so this is actually, uh, two years closer, uh, than what we had, uh, asked for, so we're, and, and pretty much the amount of money that we'd asked for, for, for right across Canada, so very appreciative of federal government making that announcement, and look forward to, uh, putting that money to good use. Uh, I also took part in the ninth annual UDI, uh, virtual mayor's panel on February the eleventh, uh, mayors from the cities of Abbotsford, Surrey, Maple Ridge, Chilliwack and Langley, as well as acting mayor from the district commission. We're also part of the panel where we discuss demographic migration, property taxes, everybody's favorite, homelessness and development cost charges. Uh, on February the eighteenth, I officially became the chair of the National Zero Waste Council Management Board, and I look forward to working with the board to collabor- to collaboratively advance projects in support of the council's vision and mission. And this board, uh, is, uh, a board that has members from industry and government, uh, right across Canada, where we're looking to, uh, further the advances of, uh, national zero waste, um, and, uh, looking at ways to reduce packaging in the first place, so we don't have to look at recycling at all, just reducing it and recycling and reusing, so, uh, very exciting. And I do want to thank, uh, Mayor Malcolm Brody, who, uh, was, uh, at the very beginning of the National Zero Waste Council, and served as chair for eight years, and this year decided to step down. And as chair of Zero Waste in Metro, I was appointed, so thank him for all of his hard work in, uh, in advancing, uh, the messages of zero waste right across Canada. So over the, uh, last couple of weeks, I've attended several, uh, meetings, I know, uh, Translink certainly with this, uh, with this, um, announcement, uh, is, is encouraging, we've had some, had some strategy meetings on the future of, of Translink and the future of Suri Langley Skytrain project, and, uh, certainly that's moving ahead. A lot of work has to be done, but, uh, it's good to see it moving in a, in a forward direction. Counsel Arneson, uh, virtually attended the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce's February dinner meeting, on February sixteenth, uh, where MLA's Megan Dykman and Andrew Mercer were in attendance to discuss local issues, uh, vital to Langley's business committee and answer questions. And, uh, I know Counsel Arneson is also the Metro Climate Action Committee, Counsel Ferguson at Metro Liquid Waste, I'm sure he might have something to say about that, and Counsel Richter is the Metro Regional Parks, uh, so that's my report, uh, thank you very much, that's my screen up. And. And Counsel Richter? Hand is up.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to point out, um, for council's information that the Metro, uh, board is doing a, um, strategic retreat, uh, virtually, uh, this, uh, this week, uh, Friday and Saturday, and looking at strategic priorities for the region, and I was just wondering if any member of council had some comments that they would like, um, myself and, uh, yourself, Mr. Mayor, to carry forward to that retreat on behalf of the township.
Thank you, that'd be, yep, just let us know anytime, thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
That's exactly what I wanted to, thank you, Counsel Richter, um, yeah, I have, uh, just a couple of things that you could bring, uh, and discuss at, uh, the upcoming workshop this, uh, weekend, um, number one, uh, dear to my heart indigenous relations, a reconciliation, uh, motion from, uh, uh, Mayor Mary Ann Booth, or Chair from the Indigenous Committee, that's very important, that's going to be discussed, and also a presentation, I believe, from the staff and the, of the Indigenous, Indigenous Committee at Metro, that's one thing, and also the second thing is, um, the continuation of the, uh, of programs, um, regarding, uh, both waste collection and, uh, the scraping programs and, um, the, uh, rags and, uh, inappropriate things into the sewer system, so that will, I want to make sure that Metro continues with their education programs for that, and, uh, thank you very much, both, uh, Mayor and to Counsel Richter for going to that particular, that's a very, very important, uh, uh, meeting this coming weekend, I guess Friday and Saturday, it's a two days, from what I understand.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, okay, so that, uh, that's the mayor council report. Move on to, um, uh, other business, and Counsel Richter, you have a notice of motion.
Yes, and I will move the motion.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Woodward seconds it? I would ask, uh, for a motion to divide, as it seems it's in two distinct parts there, um, I would move divisions, is there a seconder? Counsel?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counsel Richter, I'll just do a raise of hands, all those in favor of division? Opposed? Carries, thank you. Uh, Counsel Richter?
Sorry, I, I'm, sorry, I'm opposed to the division, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Long opposed to division, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Richter, do you wish to?
Yeah, I, um, I'm still, uh, quite, um, concerned about parts of the presentation on the Fraser Valley Regional Library System that we got last, uh, last week. And, uh, again, I, I know that they, they did spend a fair bit of time talking to us about how we control the service enhancements in this community. Uh, yet, I saw in the newspaper, again, this past week, that, um, an announcement was made that the library hours would be expanded across all the township libraries, that to me is a service enhancement, and I wasn't sure if we'd had any say in the expansion of those hours. So I'm thinking it's time for us to go back and, um, revisit the library master plan, and, um, we need, I think, to make some key decisions on, uh, the types of libraries, I think the community-based system that we have in place right now has served us very well. I don't see the need for us to, um, move away from it. I think some of the decisions that were being, uh, put in the position of having to make right now are moving us away from that model. So this to me represents a policy decision. And that's why I'd like to get some, uh, feedback and participation from the community on what their, uh, their wants are relative to the library. So that's the purpose of the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, I just want to state that I'm not going to support, uh, any part of this motion, uh, in fact, I don't even find it particularly accurate, because we didn't review the plan in twenty twelve, uh, was on council then, the plan, uh, was presented, council is always, uh, looking at different initiatives, I would think, and, and we do that through our representative on the Fraser Valley library board, it is, uh, was explained to us when that presentation was given, that the board is, makes the decisions, we certainly have input, and, uh, we can certainly, uh, put our input in, uh, there's nothing stopping us, but to me, this seems like, uh, uh, an effort perhaps to, uh, to change our, our, uh, our future plans, which I, I'm very excited about seeing getting completed, and that is to build that library in Willoughby, in the Willoughby area, excuse me, um, so, uh, uh, if, if the council would like to bring this up and put it on our priority somewhere down the line, we just had a session with Mr. McIntosh. I think there's plenty of opportunity to, uh, to talk about it at a future priorities, uh, setting committee, because, uh, it's going to be a lot of work to do what's being suggested in this, uh, motion, but I'm quite happy with our representation, and I do congratulate, uh, Counsel Arneson for her hard, her hard work on this committee. I'm very satisfied with the way that the, uh, the board functions and the services that are being delivered, and, um, and I don't see any need to, to step in the way of any future, uh, uh, libraries that we're going to put in Willoughby, who really are looking forward and deserve to have a library put there, and it seems that that's all rolled up somehow in this motion, so I won't say anymore, I'm just, uh, that's the reason I won't be supporting it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you, um, you know, la- last meeting, I was interested in having a, a bit more time to reflect and get more information. Um, I have done that, I, uh, met with, uh, some staff and talked about it, got more information, so that I became more clear in what's happening with the libraries and how it operates here in township, and based on the information I have, I, I don't see this now as, as a priority, um. I, it certainly could become a priority of council, but that should be brought up at the council priority session, we just had one, and I don't recall um, us discussing libraries fitting into our top five needs, or, or, or even on to the next column. And so I, I, um, I, I, I don't think I would support this at this time, not that I won't support it in the future, but I think it should be discussed at council priorities to see if it really is a ca- a priority of council. And until such point, I think we should, uh, uh, move on and allow ourselves to progress the way that we have been, I'm very satisfied with what's happening right now in the township.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Arneson?
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship, um, I, I'm not going to belabor, I think, what council fundamentally understands as a process that has been undertaken to date, and so, you know, from my point of view, I actually think this motion is out of order, because I think that it is taking an opposite approach to what has been council direction and led up to the point, and I know this touches on the Willoughby Library, but to suggest to me that suddenly there is something wrong with our master library plan that was received but not ever acted upon fundamentally for this amount of time, means to me, I, I don't understand why suddenly it apparently is some kind of emergency, except that apparently there might be some concern that actually we're going to provide the community of Willoughby, our fastest growing community, with a library that effectively is in a mixed-use and walkable community, therefore, it seems to me if you were going to then rejig the whole thing and go back again, it totally repudiates all of the work that has been, been done to date, including staff work, which fundamentally has looked at all of the aspects that were, uh, brought forward, I thought were addressed, and really it does, in its internal workings, I won't get into the details, but there is a fundamental update, if you look at what has been done by staff for best management plans, how much square footage is needed, where it's needed, that's all contained within the document. So I certainly wouldn't support any of this, because I think that it's actually, I wouldn't understand why in our last council, uh, meeting with Mr. McIntosh, when the Willoughby Library was on a next agenda item, that we would look at this and say, well, let's just put it back to the bottom of the list of something that we should be looking at. I don't understand what the difference is, and if there was somebody that could give me uh, more of a cogent response as to what that is, and I'm sure there are counselors that would like to do that, I'd be willing to hear it, but I don't think that anybody spent all of this time working on a plan that in fact was in any way deficient, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, you know, I, I kind of like, I can see both sides of this one, um, you know, for me, this is kind of useful, whether, you know, whether that Willoughby Library eventually proceeds, on whatever timeline it may proceed or not. Uh, I think we probably do need to really look at this, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to be getting to a point every time we want to discuss something or start an initiative, I got to go and have a session with Dr. McIntosh, I don't really want that to be a prerequisite for every notice of motion now. Um, so I don't accept that, I don't really like to hear that, I think that we need to react to things as they come up, I think for me, the process that has led to the, the discussion around the Willoughby Library that we had at the last meeting is questionable. Um, you know, sort of this, uh, motion creep, uh, that we see, where, you know, suddenly it pops out of a third reading, I'm an amended zoning on a building, uh, I don't find that a credible, or good process, I don't find that good governance, so uh, for me, I, I think this makes a lot of sense to. So for me, I, I think this makes a lot of sense to consider this. I'm glad it's been divided. I think we can support a look at the master plan separately from considering the second part. So that's my comments for the first part, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yes, well, Counsel Long pointed out, and he's quite right, that this 2012 plan was never endorsed by council. It was brought to council, but it wasn't endorsed by council. And yet what we saw in that plan was a destination library in Willoughby. And what we're moving forward with now is a destination library in Willoughby. And I believe that libraries that are going to cost millions of dollars should be a priority. And it's funny how priorities change. Like, I would have brought this up at the priority session had I been privy to the information prior to that session, but I wasn't privy to it. I only found out about it at the last council meeting. So I don't believe the council has been well informed. I think the phrase Counsel Woodward used, this motion creep, kind of describes it quite well. And I really don't understand why we are going to be putting such a very, very expensive library of a totally different type in Willoughby than we have had in the other communities in this commu- in this, in this township. And I do believe Willoughby needs a library. Don't get me wrong on that. I just don't think we need to be spending mega millions on it. So that's where I'm coming from and that's why I've put this on the agenda. I believe it is now a priority and council needs to discuss it.
Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I'm just going to add a little bit of disagreement there. I, I don't like the characterization that we're creating a destination library in Willoughby. I think we have a plan or lack of a plan that's resulted in a rather mediocre library for Willoughby on the second floor of a building. So if we have a plan and a process that produces a mediocre outcome, I would like to revisit that process and revisit the plan that, that led us there. And that's just my personal opinion. Other people are going to disagree. I view the library on the second floor for a hundred thousand people to be a mediocre plan. So I, I think that it's right to look at what is the real plan for libraries in the township when we're locating this kind of facility in the heart of a neighborhood that's going to hit eighty to a hundred thousand people. So I don't, I don't view that. I view this as a very short sighted, short-term idea, not a, not a good, long-term, high-quality plan. And I think it's reasonable to revisit the, the process that, and the plan document that, that led us to this outcome.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
There's been certain, you know, this has been a lot of discussion, you know, with respect to Counsel Richter. It, it did give us the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, which I have done and I'm sure other members of council have done as well. I, I also went over line-by-line entry about, you know, what is being built there? What are the leaseholds? What are the shelving? What about this? I asked a lot of question and I did a little of my own research and finding, you know, we could have a large-scale library or a medium or a small library. We explained that by my racing car driver, Mr. Hargrove. But the thing is, the fact, although he's not really a racer, his nephew is. But I do really believe that, you know, we have to make a decision about moving forward in, in Willoughby. And I, but I do respect Counsel Richter and others for bringing this to our attention so we can really dig down. I even have an amendment coming forward in the report. That's not on the table right now, but in the fact that, you know, we like to tighten up some things as well as far our responsibility. So, you know, it's six to one, half to the other, whether it's a destination, I believe it is, but it could be argued it's not. It could be larger, of course, and it could be more grandiose. But all these things cost money and libraries, we don't get fees and charges for libraries like, like pools or like rinks and other things. We are really caught. So anyone who studies those things understand, it's, it's the same thing as why is the private sector not involved in building pools? Because there's no, they, they don't make money. They lose money and that's the, the challenge out there. So, you know, I'm prepared to hear more from my council colleagues, but I've certainly done a lot of, a lot of research and I, I compliment Counsel Richter for asking us to roll up our sleeves and do work on this particular aspect.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, this is, you know, we had lots of conversation last time about whether this was a, a destination library or not. I think this has been referred to as a community library. It's not a destination library. It's also not a mediocre library. The librarians who spoke to us, the, I forget the gentleman's name from the Fraser Valley Regional Library, who presented to us said that the plans would make a very good library, that it would be an outstanding facility and with some really unique features. So that doesn't sound mediocre to me. It is on the second floor for vehicles who will all park on the second floor. So for anyone who drives, it'll be a first-floor access. For anyone who walks, there'll be a first-floor access. They'll walk in and, and get that elevator, which will be really nice and a nice lounge area for them to have access to it. So it doesn't function like what we might describe as a second-floor library. So based on the experts who are really knowledgeable about libraries, this is going to be an outstanding facility that we've talked about there. So do I think we need a, a review? Yeah, it's possible. And like I say, I have no problem if we bring it up at a priorities meeting and council decides that it's a priority of council. We should do that in this case. We have a lot of tasks that we put staff on to, a lot of reports that we ask staff to write. And I don't think this is one that is necessary at this time. Maybe it will be down the road, but I don't think it is today.
Thank you. All right, seems to end discussion. On the first part, I will call a question. All those in favor?
I am.
Okay, so Counsel Richter and Counsel, are those opposed? So we've got Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Froos, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Kunst, Counsel Long, Counsel Ferguson. The first part fails. And so on the second part, Counsel Woodward, the second part.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so, so thanks. I don't know if Counsel Richter wants to speak to the second part.
Her hand's not up, so you, you've got the floor.
Great, thanks. Yeah, well, sorry. Yeah, I don't quite, I was just going to ask, Mr. Mayor, we're not, I'm not really sure how the second part is going to work.
Excuse me, Counsel Woodward. I've, I was, when we divide these things, it always gets confusing because there are two separate votes. So Counsel Woodward can speak again. I'm not, I'm not going to.
Isn't part two now moot? Because in part two says that after, we have to wait till the study that is now, has failed. So I, I don't see how part, that's a disappointed vote.
No, I think it's still to be voted on and then it's clear. So, sorry, Counsel Woodward, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the wording here specifically, Mr. Mayor. So please review and update the T L M master plan prior to any final decision. So would that not be a repeat of the vote of the first part? So, so if I, if we, you know, if we're going to vote for this, wouldn't that contradict the previous one? I'm not going to belabor it. I think the vote's clear. I think, I think the vote's clear on this one. I, this one here would be more appropriate to have you discuss the, the new library in Willoughby, supposed to the previous one. You know, I think when the, the, I mean, this is, this has kind of become interesting. The expert tells us ten things and we're rejecting the three or four that he said that we don't like. So for example, if he tells me that most people that go to library walk to the library, I don't know what the parking lot has to do with anything. He tells me that the second floor is harder for people with mobility issues, such as seniors and young families to get to. That's pretty clear to me that it's a mediocre library, not, not designed for a walkable area. When, when they tell me that the usage of the library is going to be down by approximately twenty percent, possibly more because of its location, tells me we're building a pretty mediocre library. And, and I don't know why we would be spending millions renting a space to, to, to build out a library that's a short-term, short-sighted library. So that's my opinion. I would have preferred that we did some discussion and review before that expenditure, but I respect the fact that there's a majority that, that want to proceed with that project and that's what's going to happen. I appreciate the desire to, to look at the plan prior to doing that, if the plan produced this particular proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear on the motion, I do believe it is in order because at any time, counsel could come up with another review of a plan. So we need to dispose of this, I, I believe, properly through a vote of council. So I interpret it, maybe it's a little bit gray, but I think if we have a vote, then it's disposed of properly. Thank you. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Worship. I, I do appreciate council feedback. Obviously, we're a group of diverse individuals with different perspectives. So I personally believe that if you have voted down the first part of the divided motion, that the second part does become moot, but I'm happy to put it to rest because I think in any event, de facto, if you were to have supported a library master plan and a task force, the very effect of that would be to totally quash any ability to have, and this is my personal view, to have a library in the Willoughby Town Center or probably anywhere in Willoughby based on the inaction and our inability so far between the time when we had any master plan and now as to any forward movement or momentum towards creating a library in our fastest growing community. So effectively, I, I wouldn't be supporting this aspect of it. And I do find problematic some of these characterizations of comments that were made. And I'm not sure if the individual who is making these comments actually thought that there was conflicting information, but I think it's somewhat sadly a cherry-picking option to look at something that's already been predetermined about a thing that is less than desirable from somebody's point of view and then saying, well, for these are all the reasons, and then totally neglecting all the reasons why it is a good thing. So I choose to look at what all the staff work and report said about why it was something that was good. And in fact, when is a second-story library not a second-story library? It would be this situation because I'm sitting in the township and looking outside the window and we have exactly the same configuration. And I don't know anybody that is critiquing the township to say, what a stupid plan that is. It's really a mediocre kind of civic facility because you got a door that opens downstairs where people can go and come in, and then you have people that can drive up a ramp and they can park and all of our services on the second floor are there. So I do not understand that logic and therefore I reject that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, without a problem, question on the second part. All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
And opposed? So we'll go Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Froos, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Long, Counsel Kunst and Counsel Ferguson opposed. So that fails. Thank you. Move on to O two, and this is Counsel Richter.
Yep, and I'll move that motion too, please.
Is there a secondary? I don't see a second, so we'll, Counsel Woodward seconds it. And just want to ask staff if there's an update on this. I know that some work has been done by staff and it.
Thank you, Worship. We were made aware of the concerns of the resident and staff have been in communication with the resident and they're looking at ways to try to meet the concerns. So it's on the radar, but I, I don't really have an update in terms of what the end result will be just yet.
Okay, so thanks. So, so this motion would just help with staff's already doing, is that what you're saying? Yeah, okay, thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a huge amount of background on this. That's why I'm, I'm concerned about supporting it. But as long as staff are comfortable with reporting back on the options because, you know, the motion does say that to put short-term time limit and all this kind of stuff in which may or may not be staff recommendation. So if, if staff can be sure that they come back to us with information, then I can support that. And that's what it says, I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to, I guess, provide additional information to council before final decisions made in that there was a report that was provided to council a couple of years back, as I recall, that essentially advised council that we don't currently have the, the administrative systems in place to be able to, I guess, implement a, a restricted parking, resident-only parking or enforcement regime that goes with that, time-limited parking, et cetera. And the appropriate areas might be beyond the one that was referenced in the, in the motion around the hospital, for example, or around the event center and potentially other areas around the transit exchange in, in Carval. So just wanted to remind council of that report and perhaps we can, we can provide council with a copy of that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a little bit mixed up there because the staff member was, Mr. Seffy was talking about Carval. I think this relates to Brookswood. Is that not correct?
He's using Carval as an example of where they've looked into similar actions.
Well, okay, so I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with this and I, I will ask the staff. Now, I, I know that you probably should have to send bylaws out there every once in a while. I know this area shop in this area. I mean, we're there all the time. So I know that people park their trucks there and I think the, it's, it's questionable whether it's legal or not, whether there's a no, no parking or not on that Forty-One Avenue. And a lot of them are making deliveries to the commercial on both sides of that road. And also know that the odd time people are parking there because it's a busy, the, both the malls get very busy, especially on weekends, Christmas holidays and things like that where there's a need to shop quite a bit. So I think, I don't have a problem with staff coming back because there are some glitches on that road and sometimes the residents are frustrated by the fact that here there's guys, people parking illegally or not within the, the hours given. Also, I'm not sure how good the memory of myself and staff. Was this not the street, if I may, that we had a number of problems with servicing when High Point was going down, if I may, through the chair?
Seffy, do you have any recollection of Mr. Back, Mr. Back?
Thank you, Worship, suggesting. The forty-four, Forty-first Avenue, I, I don't believe it was per se on the avenue. I think it was just down the, the routing of Two Hundred Street through the Brookswood down, Brookswood Court. I think that's what Counsel Ferguson's referring to. There were some challenges, but that was, was said many years ago.
Yeah, that was a number, that was a number of years. As I say, I, I have no problem getting a quick report and I guess bylaws might have to ask some questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yes, I'm, and the motion is just to ask staff to look into this to see if some options might be feasible for this area. In many respects, I think we could probably almost look at it as perhaps a bit of a pilot test or a pre-test or something of that nature. Certainly, parking issues have been quite dominant in the township since we started developing Willoughby and we still get letters about parking availability in Willoughby. We've had some this, this past week even. But in this particular case, I'm, I'd be very happy to hear what possible recommendations staff might have and those possible recommendations may end up being helpful to other areas of the township as well.
Thank you. All right, so no further discussions. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Go to Counsel Anderson for O three. Counsel Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Actually, I'm not going to read any part of it. I'm assuming that council has already reviewed it and considered what the request is. It's about COVID-19 and community grants, so I, I think it's fairly straightforward. Oops, I might talk. Yeah, sorry. I'll, I'll just move it. Thank you. Yes.
Second by, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. So I just have one question for staff. I, I think it's reading through the motion. This is the remainder of the immediate pandemic period, so I just want to make sure that this is current with this pandemic and not, you know, something that would be, once the pandemic's over, back to some sort of normal that this wouldn't carry forward. Is that, do we understand it, Mr. Back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's correct, Worship. It's effectively time limited till the end of the pandemic.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Anderson, do you wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Worship. I, I just want to say I know council recollects the challenge that we had last year when there was a community grant applications. And because of COVID, there weren't any opportunities to really effectively address because there are specific criteria for our community grants. And so this is an opportunity where I worked with the, I guess, the department that deals with these to try and figure out what a parallel opportunity would look like. So in a year where we know we're going forward in 2021 and we still have COVID-19 restrictions, it's an opportunity for us to consider through staff review and making a report back to council what options we could have to help to provide different service groups and those who may wish and could be able to meet slightly amended criteria for our community grants. So that's the intention.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, well, the motion doesn't say options. The motion quite specifically directs staff to bring forward a policy amendment. And I believe we had a fairly robust discussion a while back with regards to the purpose of township grant funding in order to increase economic activity within the community, to help out, get people to events. That's the purpose of. um, activity within the community to help out, uh, get people to events. That's the purpose of the tax, property tax dollars going into it. And, um, I also recall that there were, um, uh, there was at least one application that, uh, was getting significant fundings from other levels of government due to COVID. So I, I, I just see this as a download onto property tax dollars when other tax dollars are probably available for, uh, these particular activities. So I'm not in support of this. I think that the grant dollars we put out should be in order to promote economic development. Uh, and to get people to the festivals, which helps with the spin-off in economic development. And I don't think we should be doing this. I don't think that this is the proper use of tax dollars. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Council Woodward?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that was raised. I was gonna raise the same thing. So yeah, it was said like some options. I tweaked on that because that's again, not listed in the motion. So I think it's, it's always really careful. You have to actually read these things. Uh, because I would like to ask, miss, maybe to clarify, I'd like to ask staff through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, what do they think a policy amendment for council review means? Uh, because I think we've been down this road with some of my initiatives. Um, I'd like to get that clear. Draft a community policy amendment. Well, uh, based on what exactly? Based on what criteria? Uh, it's remind, this kind of reminds me of where we ended up with a two-week tree and the parking lot situation. Um, you know, I would like to have some more clarity on what it's for, what the purpose is, because my understanding of the grant program is exactly that, economic development for our business districts. Uh, bringing people to areas, uh, such as, you know, even as such as the L E C, some exposure there. Um, you know, downtown Fort Langley, downtown Alder Grove, such as these events that we support, like the Cruisin' and the Frambury Festival and so on. So I, I'm a little unclear, um, you know, uh, how the Zoom event provides the same benefits to the community for the tax dollars. And so I, I would like to understand what that means to staff, uh, prior to voting on this.
Mr. Backen, do you have any comments? No, no, it's.
No comments? Speaks for itself? Because so I don't really want to see a policy amendment. I would like to, to see what that might mean, what that might look for, look like prior to agreeing to this. So I won't support a policy amendment, not knowing what it means, um, what the benefits are, uh, to funding Zoom events. Um, as much as I might, might want to support some of these groups through difficult times, and that may not be the place for, for property tax dollars. If we don't have money for food banks, I don't know why we have money to support Zoom events. So I'd like to be consistent on this and I don't support this in its current form then. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Backen?
That's a comment. Thank you, worship. Just gonna point out what, what is in the motion, which is that it integrates additional criteria that will allow for the combination of virtual unlimited in-person hybrid programming during the remainder of the immediate pandemic period. That's the scope we'd be answering this within. If there's any further directions, your worship, we could certainly take those either by, uh, motion or by consensus.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Um, yeah, just, uh, question through your worship to staff. Um, I don't have the document in front of me, um, on the purpose of community grants. But I, in my, in my memory, the purpose of community grants was for more than just economic purposes. Um, it was for the bringing of the community together. There was, uh, social, social purposes to it, um, community purposes, um, connection of community member purposes, advancement of a community, uh, you know, economics is one component. But I don't recall that it was exclusive to economic and that we only gave community grants for those things that generated economic activity. Um, I think it was for other things, but maybe I, I can't, I don't have the document in front of me. So maybe, uh, uh, from staff gives some clarification on that. And, uh, then I guess my only other comment to make would be that it's pretty clear to me what the motion is. It, it is very clear as Mr. Backen just indicated. It's just to add that we would allow virtual unlimited person hybrid programming during the pandemic. Um, it's not that confusing in my mind. But, uh, maybe it may staff could just respond on the purpose of community grants, uh, if it's more than just simply economic.
Oh, Mr. Tulamello, I believe is here. Mr. Tulamello could provide some comments?
Yes, through your worship to Council Whitmarsh, uh, you are correct. Uh, community grants reflects much more than economic development. It reflects our social sustainability charter. It reflects our arts and cultural services plan, and that is to celebrate our community and to connect our communities with one and other, uh, to each other through, through such, uh, arts and cultural activities in the community. So it's, it's much more than just economic, uh, impact. But economic impact comes from those, those activities in the community.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Council Kunst?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in, uh, favor of this. And I, I, as an example of a Zoom event, um, last week, the Heritage Week, um, had a, a really great, um, turnout. And, um, it was really awesome to be able to attend, uh, those events and then also see how many other people were able to even just go on a virtual bus tour, um, that maybe only twenty people would have normally been able to go on. And, um, and this time there were, I think, I don't know how many people watching, but then after that, those, those videos got to be uh, enjoyed by, by so many other people as well. So I think that these grants, um, allow these organizations to stay sustainable, um, through the pandemic so that they can return and, and, um, be, you know, viable. Uh, and, you know, for us to enjoy, uh, those events, you know, uh, in the future. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Richter?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, when you're ready to take an amendment, I'd like to amend the last paragraph.
Okay.
To read that council asked staff to bring forward potential options for council review that could integrate additional criteria.
Okay. Uh, Council Woodward, is your hand still up from before? I almost didn't go down, so I'll just make sure. Okay.
No, I can certainly, I can certainly weigh in and dispose of the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So Council Richter, you wish to make amendment?
Yes. So the first sentence in the last paragraph would be changed to read, therefore be it resolved that council ask staff to bring forward potential options. Strike, uh, a draft community grants policy amendment. So bring forward potential options for council review that could integrate additional criteria. And then it would continue on.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second or? To the amendment? Don't see any second or. Oh, Council Woodward seconds. Okay. Uh, okay. So on the amendment?
Yes, I'd like to speak to it, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm a little concerned that sometimes these motions come forward and they end up sending, um, a very clear direction about workload to staff uh, that ends up in us getting, um, giving approval to things that perhaps we haven't given full or complete, uh, thought to uh, through, uh, the council, uh, policy process. So by using this particular wording, I think we're making it quite clear that this is a potential for council to consider. Not a demand that staff produce. And I think that's a very important distinction.
Thank you. Council Long, on the amendment?
Well, I don't know, I don't think it's any less work for staff to have to, you know, change, changing the wording isn't gonna change the work that staff are gonna need to do in researching. So either you're, you're for it or against it. So if, if you're, if you're not gonna support the one set, uh, then you don't support it. If you do, then staff are going to put it together and bring it down. And of course, when it comes to council, we're gonna debate it all over again. And if there's some changes required, we can make those. Uh, and that's the time we can, uh, we can discuss whether the re, the report goes to where council wants it to go. But I don't see how changing the wording here is gonna make any difference in terms of the workload.
Thank you. Council Ferguson?
Well, I think a lot's been said. I mean, um, I always agree with both, but.
You're very quiet. You're very quiet on what's happening.
You hear me now?
Yes, very good. I'm clear. Thanks.
I think what happens is, uh, I always wonder about sometimes when we ask staff to do certain things about they already have a, a workload in front of them. And it is a concern, and that was my concern about this motion and others, you know, whether even though we have a criteria, whether adding to more and, uh, COVID and also the costs, those are all three things that come to my mind. Those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any further discussion on the amendments. I'll call a question on the amendment. All those in favor? And opposed? We have, um, Council Whitmarsh, Council Fro, Mayor, sorry, Council Whitmarsh, Mayor Frohls, Council Arneson, Council Long, Council Kunst opposed. The amendment fails. We're back to the main motion. As, or main motion, uh, Council Woodward on the main motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to it again. I mean, I just obviously have to be more careful with, uh, some of my opt, opt to provide some more specificity for some apparently. So what I'm referring to, of course, is what we know or what I perceived, let's say that, that's maybe that's more better, is that this, this notice of motion is attempting to correct the situation we had last year in regards to some delegations from specific events. And, and those events were, uh, you know, held outside in downtown areas. And the purpose to me of those events is economic development. So of course, when you bring people together, you're bringing people together. But the reason we're investing money in it, uh, for me at least, was along the economic development angle. And this is very general uh, in terms of all, let's, let's allow for all kinds of maybe different, uh, COVID-style events, but it seems to be, maybe the mover can correct me if I'm wrong, seems to be trying to address the issue we had last year in regards to one or two specific events. And so if that's the case, then for me, um, I would prefer that, that, that we, you know, get through COVID and not start creating COVID, COVID grants for specific events for people to hold on Zoom. I, I think Council Kunst, I've heard of that event. That was, sounded like it was pretty cool, but I'm not sure we necessarily wanted to spend a lot of money to private hands uh, to produce those. Uh, that's just my opinion. I think we should be looking more carefully at that. Um, I know some of the effort I have to go through to get a policy amended. Uh, it seems that applies to me and not some others. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Council Arneson?
Thank you, worship. Um, I, I don't really necessarily want to absolutely debate, uh, the pros and cons of doing this. But just to clarify, that if you look in our distribution package, there's a number of different groups, including those who put on the Remembrance Day ceremony in Fort Langley, that would appreciate the opportunity to have some funding. So these are not just the individuals that came to us last year. I think these are a more a broad-based group of individuals who have a number of different types of activities that they could otherwise do and find themselves struggling as a result of the pandemic. So I don't think we should really pigeonhole them in a specific kind of way and con, conglomerate them all together in some way as these must be, you know, the people that were coming to talk to us last year. So I just would, uh, urge us to look at the fact of who's asking for this money, what the purpose of their activities are. And it's frankly the case that I talked to Mr. Tulamello about it. And, you know, I have conferred with staff. And this was something that was deemed to be a viable way to get out of the conundrum that I believe that we have in terms of our community grant. Some may focus on elements of it such as the economic, but there is a plethora of things that we are trying to achieve with this grant, not just the economic. So I would urge us to look at that aspect and just vote for this and see what comes back from those who have specialized and acted on their behalf in staff all this time in terms of developing something that works as a program. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Richter, I know your second time with amendment, so go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just want to note that the five letters we got in, four of them were from Fort Langley Associations that are connected with one particular event. I don't call that broad-based in the least. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So on the motion, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And opposed?
I am opposed.
We have, we have Council Ferguson and Council Richter and Council Woodward opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Council Richter?
Um, yes, I would like to add a notice of motion for the next meeting. Um, which I will send to, uh, staff for the, uh, for the purposes of the agenda. It's with regards to the two-sixteenth Street North road signage. And it's based on the email that we received this past weekend from, uh, Whitmarsh. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other business? Anything done? I'll now move to, uh, motion to resolve and special close for the items, uh, on the agenda and on table. Could I have a motion, please?
Your worship.
Arneson moves it. Council Whitmarsh seconds. Uh, Council Ar, Council Long?
I'd just like to add a property item, please.
Long property. Okay. Council Arne, uh, Council Richter?
Yes, I'd like to add a personnel item.
Council Arneson?
Thank you, worship. A legal item, please.
Okay. And I'm gonna add a legal item. Also, so with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? What was carried? And then now I need a motion to terminate?
Termination.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, just point forward our delegation.
Our, our delegate, sorry, I should have, uh, uh, I've got word the delegation had to cancel.
Had to cancel. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, so start over again. Motion to terminate was Council Arneson? And second by Council Long? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Uh, we'll reconvene at, uh, three-twenty.